Call back to the Council's now assertion, please press for the invocation led by Councilman Springs, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community, grant us wisdom, clarity, and compassion as we make decisions that affect the lives of those we represent. May our decisions be guided by integrity and shared commitment to the common good. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Court, please call and roll.
Mr. Ayler?
Here.
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Spring.
I make a motion at least to spend their reading in a minute.
Seconded by Mr. Ayler.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes. Are there any additions or corrections submitted? Seeing none, we'll move to administrative reports. Mayor's office, Mayor Christman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council, good evening, guests. I have four different boards to appoint people to. Their terms are expiring. I've contacted each one and both they have all agreed. I'll start down the list here. I have Brian Osterfeld for the Board of zoning appeals. He's a five-year term. And his term actually expired 4/13 of 25. He won't be doing that again.
Okay, we'll ask for a motion in a second to appoint Brian Osterfeld to the Board of zoning appeals for a five-year term. Motion by Ms. McKenzie Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. James.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Okay. The second one is for the Shade Tree Commission, Kelly Douglas Bader. This is a three-year term. Her term expires May 14th of this year.
Motion in a second to appoint Kelly Douglas Bader to the Shade Tree Commission for a three-year term. Motion made by Mrs. Baker, seconded by Mrs. James.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
The third one is for Civil Service Commission, Dan Branson. His term expires May 11th. It's a three-year term.
Let my court catch up here.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion in a second to appoint Dan Branson to a three-year term to the Civil Service Commission. Motion made by Mr. Ayler, seconded by Mr. Reese.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
And the last one is for the Board of Tax Review, Heather Fiesel. Two-year term. Hers expires May 10th of this year.
Motion in a second to appoint Heather Fiesel to the Board of Tax Review. Motion made by Mrs. Baker, seconded by Mr. Ayler. It's a two-year term.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments or questions for the mayor? Seeing none, we'll move to Service Safety Director, Mr. Dodds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council and guests. A few items to report on this evening. One, giving you an update from our last meeting. I talked about some of the stormwater issues that we had from those heavy rains. Our crews were able to get out to the White Pines, Raymond Road area and dip out one side of one of those ponds. Still a little too wet to get in there to get all of it done, but we will return to get some more of that done as the conditions permit out there. Engineer Mr. Bischoff has also been working with the developers and builders in that area on some changes to some grading plans so that in the event there would be water in the road again, there's an easier way for it to escape and not sit there. So we're continuing to evaluate options there. And the same with the larger pond behind Michigan Street. Again, it's been a little too wet for us to get in there and probably will be for some time, but we are continuing to evaluate options as we're going to see some development in that area too and how we may need to reshape that and move forward there. So I wanted to update you on that. A couple good news things out of the Water Department. The summer street water line project has been completed. And they also had 24 road excavations that were paved over the last couple of weeks that were from the winter where you had breaks or repairs during the cold months. Those have all been asphalt and paved over, so that's a welcome sight, not those that were gravel patches, drive over longer. And then finally, another good news thing, downtown business partnerships sponsored a convention with the city today, a downtown cleanup event. We had about 50 volunteers that worked downtown for three hours doing various tasks, so really spruced up the downtown. Got the planters ready to go, mulch around the trees, and picked up a lot of trash and did a lot of good work. So town looks really good. Just want to extend our thanks to them and all the volunteers that helped make that happen. So appreciate that. That was my report. We're happy to hear. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dodds. Any comments or questions for Mr. Dodds? Seeing none, we'll move to Law Director, Mr. Stoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council and guests. Tonight's agenda, we'll see a few items this one to point out. Legislation items 2524 and 2525. And fourth quarter, I can't remember which month. I think it was November. Council had before it tap fees for both sewer and water lines that were under consideration. And those were tabled, and we've left those tabled, so those will just remain tabled. And in lieu of bringing those back to Council, we reintroduced new legislation for those. Primary change on the tap fees being it's going to $2,000 per sewer and water taps for residential homes effective June 1st of this year. And then included in the same legislation, incrementally, we'll be increasing those to $2,500 on January 1st of 2026. And that was down from, I believe, $3,500 per. That was being proposed last year. And those funds would go to support water and sewer projects within the city as we continue expansion with the new housing. And then one other item on the agenda I did notice, which was the first item, 2523. It is to be Phase Four of the subdivision. It could have been a holdover from the prior phase of the Maris Park subdivision, but that should read Phase Four. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stoll. Any comments or questions for Mr. Stoll? Seeing none, we'll move to Auditor's Report, Mr. Brentlinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brentlinger. Any comments or questions for Mr. Brentlinger? Seeing none, we'll move to Police Chief, Chief Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council, good evening, guests. I just want to report to you on some, I guess, logistical things. So if you remember, we had finished up some officer candidate interviews. So we're now pulling backgrounds on a couple of them to see if they can progress for us. And we should know more here in the next few days and have a candidate or two ready to go. And then the vehicles that I was telling you about that we've been waiting on since early 2024. We took delivery of the truck last week, and the city garage guys were able to get it on the road for us. So it actually hit the road today, the new pickup truck. And then part of Public Safety was on the ball this time, and we picked up the SUV today. So the city garage guys will have it and have it ready to go next week, I think. And both of those were from 2024. And then I had placed an order for the 21, 2025 vehicle so far. They're thinking delivery will be sometime mid to late summer, July, late July is what they think, before we'll get it from the factory. And the last thing is Assistant Police Academy is over already. It graduates this week, so that's this Thursday meeting. So I congratulate them on a successful class. That's all my report, and I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fire Chief, Chief Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. Just some small, minute updates from a couple of weeks ago. We did have some representatives from Mock Alert and Motorola at the station today. They came to do a site visit, pretty much just doing a design review for our new alerting system that will be getting put in place later this year. So that's going to be quite the project. It's going to be about probably nine or 10 months before everything's pretty much all in place. But today, they pretty much just went through and was looking at where the hardware is going to go, some monitors and control boards and all that type of thing. So glad to get that ball rolling. And then I mentioned last meeting that I put a contingent job offer out to one of our candidates. So his background checks did come back clean, so he will be getting the official job offer tomorrow, once I get that drafted. So we will have our vacancy that was created a few weeks ago filled. And then I'm still in communications with the assistant chiefs to find out when we can get a date set set up with Civil Service Commission to start interviews. We're getting that ball rolling as well. So other than that, that is all I have. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Utility Department, Ms. Stratton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all. I just wanted to say we successfully transitioned to the outsourcing of our bill printing. It's a much nicer, cleaner-looking bill, and it does have abilities with different... Like if there's ACH billing, final billing, everything is spelled out a little nicer. Also, we do offer email billing, so I wanted to make mention of that for anyone who's interested. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Stratton. Any comments or questions for Ms. Stratton? Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Borath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. I just want to say thank you for Council Administration, Mr. Bischoff, working hard on the tap fee updates. I want to appreciate you guys tabling that late last year, including extra thought and research there. Think for this language is really good. I think it's an excellent step for preparing for needed new infrastructure and growth, but also balancing wanting us to be a welcoming community for our new developers that are coming in. So really appreciate that. I encourage you to support those pieces of legislation we vote. For those interested, we have our time of year doing our signing events for the schools. So our 3E signing days are taking place all across the county. Bell Fountain will have theirs next Monday at 8:00 a.m. So this is where all the seniors get together, and they'll have a certificate, and they sign whether they're going to be employed, enlisted, or enrolled. It's a neat program we've been putting together for several years now. You're welcome to come. I just want to come and celebrate with the students and be there to support them. We will be doing some additional marketing in the month of May, just encouraging all our residents. When I go into graduation parties and talking to family and friends, the appropriate question is not, where are you going to school? The appropriate question is, tell me what you're doing after you graduate. We want our students to know that there are great opportunities for them. Many may enter straight into the workforce. They may go back to school after that, and they may get it paid for by an employer. And so it's really exciting for kids that are choosing to go into the workforce, choosing to enlist in the military, or maybe it's the right time for them to go off to college. So just actually be mindful of that if you're having conversations with local graduates. Make sure to ask that right question. Last thing I'll say is Thursday, May 1st, is National Day of Prayer. So if you haven't heard about that, noon at the courthouse, there should be a pretty good community gathering there. So encourage you to stop by and participate in that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Borath. Any comments or questions for Mr. Borath? Seeing none, thank you for your report. I don't see any other administrative officials in the audience, so that will conclude our administrative reports. We'll now move to reports from standing committees, Finance Committee, Mr. Spring.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a very quick report tonight. We have five ordinances that we'll be asking for second reading only. We have nothing for first reading and nothing for third. And then due to the two hearings on our May 13th meeting, we're going to move the finance meeting to 5:30 here in Council Chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Rules Committee, Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two ordinances on the agenda tonight. 2523 is the ordinance approving the Maris Park Phase Four subdivision dedication. So I'll be asking to amend that title. I assume I need to do that, Mr. Stoll, to amend the title?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. We will also be asking for first and final on that, and the reason for that is that there are multiple lots available and buyers ready to go. So we'll be asking waive the three-reading rule in addition to amending that one.
I think you're probably all going to also need to waive the 48-hour notice requirement.
On the amendment. Forty-eight hour first, then the amendment as two separate items?
No, we didn't make a notice on the amendment.
We don't need to waive the 48-hour?
It's correct in the body of it. It's just not in the title.
And I sent it on Sunday, so it can be amended, but it was in. It was okay because it was on there by Sunday.
Okay. So then just scratch that and just motion to amend and then waive the three-reading rule.
And then secondly, we have ordinance 2526. This is again the third time that we're looking to pass the solar legislation that adds the chapter to the code. No changes at all to that wording. It's just putting it on the agenda again. The main reason that we're hearing it again is because we've heard from both the administration and planning officials that they really strongly prefer to have something in the code either way for solar before they hear any or approve any zoning requests to change to or come in as M1 or M2 because there's nothing addressing solar now. So we'll be asking for first reading only on that one, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Safety Committee, Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have a report?
Mr. Reese, Utilities Committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two ordinances on the agenda this evening that both Mr. Stoll and Mr. Borath discussed, both to do with capacity fees. First, 2524 has to do with sewer. 2525 has to do with water. These both bring capacity fee rates in line with our current communities. And it's important as our communities see some more development. We will vote on a small amendment to 2525 that will clarify where meter requests will be filed and regarding the cost of replacement water meters.
Are you prepared to read those amendments into the record?
I got an email for it. Go read it. So I have a copy of the original one and a copy of the amendments. How would I do that?
We just need to, when you make your motion to amend, you need to state whatever particular section you're amending and what the language is going to be.
Sure. I can do that.
Yep.
Do I need to read this full paragraph here or just the two sections that are being amended? Just read the whole paragraph into the record. Okay. Work on your English skills. Okay. We will be asking for first reading only on this, so that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Streets Committee, Mr. Ayler.
Yes, we have one ordinance, 2514, it's the alley vacation. We're looking for adoption on there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ayler. Sidewalks, curbs, and parks committee, Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. And then finally, Audit Committee, Mrs. Baker.
No report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. That concludes the reports of standing committees on the news portion of our meeting. We're welcoming communications from citizens. If there are any citizens in the audience who seek to address council, please approach the lectern, state your name and address, after which the chair will recognize you. You speak for up to five minutes.
Good evening, senior. 3743 Logan Road. I'd just like to piggyback onto what Chief Marlowe said about the Citizens Police Academy. I'm one of the people that will be graduating this Thursday from that. And I know there's another candidate or attendee in here also. But it's been great. It's been fun. It's been so informational. I, there's, I think there's 15 of us in the class. We're the 13th class. I think we've all had a fantastic time, and we've all gotten all the talk, and we've all gotten so much out of it. So I want to thank the Police Department for doing that, putting that on every year. And I just want everyone to know that how word cloud has been and so informational, and I wish everyone could go through that program. I'd love to go through it again. I enjoyed it so much. But I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Any other members of the audience who seek to address council?
Good evening, Sean Stevens, 1601 Red Amendment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens, just a second.
Stevens?
Sean Stevens. Just a second. I'll reset it. Go ahead, sir.
I did have some specific things that I wanted to go over in deference to Mr. Dodds' report earlier. I will amend some of what I had to say, and I appreciate the update, sir. Thank you. So as everyone is aware, in the early morning hours of April 5th, there was significant flooding that occurred on Raymond Avenue and White Pine Drive. This flooding did cause property damage to multiple homeowners and a great deal of stress to the residents who were left to deal with the situation. This flooding was a direct result of water overflow of the retention ponds. This was brought up at the following Tuesday's council meeting. And as noted in the meeting, the primary cause of this flooding was clogged storm drains. As the overflow drainage was only partially operating at partial capacity, it could not remove the water from the ponds to keep up with the rainfall. That same week, a crew was out to clean out their retention ponds, which was certainly a cause for relief. I do appreciate that, Mr. Dodds. Unfortunately, this relief was short-lived as the cleanup was not done to completion. You did allude to that in your statement earlier, where they weren't able to finish the entirety of the ponds, which I do acknowledge that, and I appreciate your intention to come out there and get that completed. The concerns regarding this incomplete cleanup, though, is the loose debris that was left behind. And the debris that was left behind, mainly the reeds and whatnot, was a direct cause of the clogged drains. Now, I do acknowledge what Mr. Dodds said as far as the condition of the ponds and difficulties in getting equipment down into the ponds. That, however, does not preclude someone from physically going in and handling cleanup of the loose reeds and debris within the pond. I myself was down in that pond. I did take pictures. I could certainly have handled a cleanup of the loose debris that was in the ponds. Definitely not something I desired to do, nor would it be my responsibility to do, but that could have been accomplished. And we are fortunate in regards to the fact that we did not have another significant rain event that would have washed that into the piping and potentially caused another clog. I would like to note, they did a very good job, by the way, of the fact that they did do... Many of the residents weren't even aware of that cement drainage trough. So that was a pleasure to see. Of concern, though, we've been informed by neighbors that this has been an ongoing issue for many years. This was not a one-time event, and there has been significant flooding in that area over a significant period of time. The cleanup of the ponds does not seem to be being handled properly or on a regular basis. And now that we have connecting neighborhoods, obviously Maris Park connecting to Whispering Pines, and now even, you know, Phase Four, I believe, was mentioned, even more growth of Maris Park. It seems that the problem is doing nothing more at this point than being sprayed into another neighborhood. It really, at this point, leaves the residents on Raymond questioning the engineering and wondering if any houses should have been built behind those ponds at all. With such a known issue, it leads one to believe that either city-approved engineering plans were insufficient or the properties were not truly buildable and the houses not built should be truly had of. While many neighbors have been informed that considerations are being made to identify solutions, when considering this has happened before and being told by both our developer and a developer, this will happen again, it would seem that placating and sweeping the issue under the rug has become the norm. I do hope that's not to be the case. Again, in deference to Mr. Dodds, he has been very forthcoming thus far at these meetings as far as what we hope are going to be plans going forward. I am sorry to sound critical, but after seeing the cleaning of the pond and the leaving behind of the debris that caused the drains to clog to begin with, it does leave a lot of room to become skeptical of outcomes. I do recognize that much of the current administration is new to this issue, but please understand that the issue is not new to the city of Bell Fountain. We as residents can only hope that this situation, which has existed and repeated often for many years, will finally be taken seriously and rectified with a permanent solution. While that water obviously comes from natural causes, the resulting flood is very man-made, directly attributable to the development, engineering plans that fail to properly account for water storm off and a lack of proper maintenance. As we are told that the engineering was planned around a 100-year flood lane, the fact that this has happened multiple times over the past years tells me that either the engineering... It tells me the engineering was not sufficient. The city administration owes to its residents a responsibility, and to date, that responsibility has not been met. We are bringing these concerns to you, ensuring they are made a part of record, and in hopes that this platform is sufficient for our voices to be heard and the situation be addressed before there are any more losses suffered. Thank you.
Any other members of the audience who seek to address council?
Jeremy Loban, 4198, playground 68. Again, I wasn't going to speak originally, but I guess I'll just correct a few things. I did say that what happened again, what I said was a 100-year flood would happen again. We've had it two times in six years, so odds are we're going to have another one probably in another year or two. So as far as the design of it, I can guarantee you that it is designed for a 100-year flood. The problem that happened, as was pointed out, you can't design something for a 100-year flood when the water can't get into the catch bases to carry a 100-year flood. So at the end of the day, the catch bases were plugged on top. I've heard there was an ordinance that homeowners should try to look at front of their houses and clear their catch bases during a storm. I don't know. I haven't looked into that yet. But at the end of the day, I guess on record, I'll say that it is designed for a 100-year flood. Anything going downhill from there will not affect the uphill side of it when the uphill side can't get the water in. So as the storm sewer goes farther to the south, it only increases bigger in size. And the only, I don't know, many home developments that are south of that that drains into the south. Until somebody starts building south of County Route 10. So that's all I have.
Any other members of the audience who seek to address council? Seeing none, that will conclude the communications from citizens portion of our meeting. We'll now move to our legislative agenda with ordinances for first reading.
An ordinance approving the Maris Park Phase Three, which will be amended to Phase Four subdivision dedication plot containing 10.786 acres in Jefferson Township and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. James.
A motion to amend the title to read Phase Four rather than Phase Three. Everything within the body of the document is correct.
Seconded by Mr. Ayler.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Motion to waive the three-reading rule.
Segmented by Mr. Ayler.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Motion to pass on first and final.
Segmented by Mr. Ayler.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Motion to adopt.
Segmented by Mr. Ayler.
Mr. Ayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
An ordinance amending certain provision of Chapter 925 sewers of the codified ordinances of the city of Bell Fountain, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Dix?
Motion to pass on first reading only.
Segmented by Mrs. James.
Mr. Ayler? Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
And ordinance amending certain provision of Chapter 923 water of the codified ordinances of the city of Bell Fountain, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Davis.
Motion to amend Section 1 under 923.01 rates, Section D, um, to say meter installation fee requests for a new water service connection shall be filed with the city engineer's office and shall be accompanied by a service connection fee of $300. No such request shall be considered without the connection fee paid. The charges for any and all installations of water connections and meters shall be computed on a time and materials basis for the meter. Electronic reading device labor supplies needed to properly complete such installation of such time and materials, uh, material costs to be in accordance with those kept on file in the office of the service safety director. For $300, service connection fee shall in all instances be paid when the request for the installation is filed with any balance due for the cost of such installation to be billed and paid upon the completion of the installation and before the use of any water by the customer, all water meters. And electronic meter reading devices remain the property of the city of Bell Fountain will be replaced when worn out by normal usage. The cost of replacement for 5/8 inch to 1-inch meters due to normal usage shall be at the sole expense of the city and the cost of the replacement for meters larger than 1-inch shall be at the sole expense of the property owner. Should I continue? Because that's where my amendment ends.
That, that's the end of that. I mean, you had another section you wanted to amend as well, right? Or was that the one?
Uh, that, that's all in the same section. Uh, I have more in that particular section, but I'm not amending.
No, just the language that you are seeking to amend is fine.
Sure.
Does that conclude the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second. Segmented by Mrs. James.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
And Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Motion to pass on first reading only.
Segmented by Mrs. James.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
And ordinance approving and adopting planning and zoning regulations regarding solar energy systems for the city of Bell Fountain to be codified as Chapter 1166 of the codified ordinances of said city.
Mrs. James.
Motion to pass on first reading only.
We have a second. Segmented by Mr. Davis.
Mr. Ailer.
No.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
No.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
No.
That concludes the ordinances for first reading. We'll now move to ordinances for second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the service safety director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Harding Street Waterline Improvements Project 2024-04W and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Segmented by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the service safety director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Malone Avenue Waterline Improvements Project 2024-03W and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Segmented by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the 2025 Street Painting and Striping Project Number 2025-2R and declaring an emergency in the city of Bell Fountain, Ohio.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Segmented by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the service safety director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract with the selected contractor and/or bidders for the Columbus Avenue and Powell Avenue Storm Improvement Project Number 2025-2ST and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Segmented by Mr. Reeser.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the service safety director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract with the selected contractor and/or bidders for the 2025 Citywide Street Resurfacing Project Number 2025-01R and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Segmented by Mr. Reeser.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Well, that concludes our ordinances for second reading. Uh, we'll now move to ordinances for third reading.
And ordinance vacating that certain east-west public alley between Lot 1584 on the north and Lot 1585 on the south in the city of Bell Fountain, Lake Township, Logan County, Ohio.
Mr. Ailer.
Motion to adopt.
Segmented by Mr. Reeser.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances for third reading and our legislative agenda this evening. We'll now move to communications from the clerk.
I have received, um, a liquor license, new liquor license request from the Robins Nest Home Decor and Gifts on 112 South Main Street. And if no one has an objection, that will be mailed.
Any objections?
Do you know which class that is? Does it say?
I don't know. No. Wait. Can I shoot a comment? I don't think so. I don't see anything to you. As in?
It was a D and then a number.
It would say what?
D and then a number.
D2.
D2. Okay. Where'd you find that?
It's in.
So I know.
Right there.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, no objections from members of council.
Okay. And that's it for me.
Okay. Um, uh, we'll now move to communications from council. Any communications from members of council? Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
I just wanted to say on behalf of the Lone County Farmers Market, the opening day of the farmers market is Saturday, May 3rd. Runs from 8:30 till noon and then that will go until the last weekend of September in the city lot.
Okay. Thank you. Any other communications from members of council? Uh, just a reminder, um, to members of council, we have two special hearings at our next meeting uh, to occur at 6:30 and 6:45, um, followed immediately by our regular, um, Bell Fountain City Council, uh, meeting. Uh, no other communications from council. I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Ailer, second by Mr. Davis.
Mrs. James, before you leave, if I went after you, I need to utilize something.
Yes.